Coming from the arsenal with my grandkids and my daughter. And I saw a policeman apprehend three black boys. And I got out of my van, I was dressed not like I'm dressed today. I didn't have my, I called it my monkey suit, but my, my work cor- on my uniform, this suit, I was dressed in blue jeans. But I got out of my car and went over to watch this policeman make these arrests of these boys. And it turned out that in the city of Pine Bluff, this man, in my opinion, had no justification for what he was doing. I watched the arrests. He wanted to know what I was doing, and I said, "I'm watching Pine Bluff's finest in action." And then he got a little upset, and he asked me for my identification, and I wanted to know why, since I hadn't done anything. But then he abruptly took my arms, put them behind my back, and then pressed me into the police car, and took me to jail. And there charged me with interfering with governmental operations. Well, it turned out, I asked them to drop the charges after they heard my side of the story, and the city wouldn't. They said, "Whenever a person is accused, the police have no reason to act." Well, in this situation, it turned out that they dropped the charges the day before I was to go to trial, because the next day, this man was pleading guilty to statutory rape of boys in Pine Bluff, Arkansas. Now, you all may not remember that, but the man was on the police force, and he lived in Grant County. And he had sodomized these boys and made them his agents. You, I never realized, thought about it before, how much at the mercy of police we are whenever they stop us. But little boys and little girls are always at their mercy, because they have, they have no equality when it comes to their credibility. And that's the way we are generally as poor and black people. But the man pled guilt, and this is where the justice system, in my opinion, reflected itself. The man was allowed to resign from the Pine Bluff Police Department. He was given a fine of $5,000, and he was given five years probation for rape. Now, I know so many people in this town are familiar with situations where on those same facts, people have been given life imprisonment and more, and their whole families have been ruined. And that's the kind of justice system that has existed in this town for some time. And that gives license to people to just do what they want to, a police, in part because they know that nothing's gonna happen to them. This man, in my opinion, I don't think he's on a sex offender list. And right after then, he was able to get another job, this time, guess what? As a security guard. Now, that doesn't have much to do with the case before us, other than to just point out, you live in a place now where there are two standards of justice, but that's most places in Arkansas where you have biracial populations, and people are yearning for freedom. And in this city, you're yearning for freedom, but in the process, freedom is hard. And Mr. Isador was seeking freedom even though he was born nearly at the beginning of last century. And he had seen most of last century, and he had lived a good life. Good as a person, poor, being born in the early part of the first part of last century. Now, he didn't hurt anybody all those years, but because of the fact that he wanted to be independent, and because he had a weapon, as he's authorized to have, in his residence, the police decided that they were going to do something to show that he didn't have the right to control himself. And that's where we start. I now want to present to you Mr. Ben Crump. Mr. Crump has come. Remember, Mr. Crump, as you know, stayed with the Trayvon Martin case, still with it. And he made sure that people throughout the nation knew about the injustice there. And there are different ways to address problems, but it became important for all of us in the country to be reminded of who we are and how vulnerable our children are, and even how vulnerable we are, as represented in this case particularly, by the gentleman who was executed, in my opinion. Now, I want Mr. Crump, who comes here most immediately from Vermont. Yesterday, he was in the snow, trying to, wanting to see if he could walk across a covered lake with ice. And this morning, he's here bringing his top coat and his earmuffs, and getting out of the car in sunshine. It's a big contrast. But he's here, and it's important, because he represents the cause of justice that needs to be advanced in this matter. And I want him to speak a few words to you, and he will then be at your meeting. I want to thank all of you all for coming, because, you know, in Pine Bluff, Arkansas, getting this many people to come to non-church meetings is just awesome. Even getting this many people to come to church meetings. Today is Tuesday, isn't it? On Tuesday, I mean, at 6 o'clock, I mean, that's just awesome. So, thank you all for coming, thank you all for the support of this family, thank you all for standing up for justice, and thank you all for coming to hear what Mr. Ben Crump has to say. Thank you, Mr. Crump.
I would be remiss if I didn't first start off by recognizing this giant in the legal profession, one of the finest lawyers in these United States, Attorney John Walker, a legend amongst us. And certainly, he is not only a legend, but he is a mentor to so many young lawyers across America. And one of the finest lawyers worked side by side with him every day, the third part of this legal team, Attorney Lawrence Anthony Walker. Y'all give him a round of applause. Now, my mentor, Attorney Walker, gave me a lot of credit, but the real credit goes to you all. It goes to the people who see an injustice and refuse to stay silent. You know, Attorney Walker, now, we can file pleadings, we can fight every day, all day, but if we're by ourselves and the people won't stand up, then there's no way we would get justice for the Trayvon Martins of the world, the Jordan Davises of the world, and yes, the Monroe Isadores of the world. You know, when you look at the full spectrum, you see those children, Trayvon and Jordan and Ernest Hoskins, a little closer to home here in Little Rock, all these young men. And then you look at the end of the spectrum, John, at our grandfather. Monroe Isador, 107 years old. Just think about that. 107 years old, no criminal history whatsoever, never hurt anybody, was beloved in the community, and for him to have to die this way, just inhumane. I know Attorney Lawrence Walker and I were talking, and we said, you know, we watched the video we're about to show you, and he said, "You don't kill a dog, you know, you would be heartbroken if a dog was killed like this." And as we laid there, we said, "It's like Mr. Isador was a deer. I mean, just innocent and harmless and wouldn't hurt a fly." But yet, you're about to see this video of the last minutes of his life, and we're gonna ask you to consider some very serious questions. Before I do that, I do want to thank some individuals, because I think this conversation is gonna get pretty heated and heavy, because we want it to be heated and heavy, because Monroe Isador, life's matter. I first want to thank Mr. Richard Reedus, and Mr., oh, I don't think it's here, but Mr. Michael Gieryard and Ms. Sandy Gieryard. Please give them a round of applause for making this possible. Certainly, Mr. Willie Hall, Mr. Donald Muhammad, Mr. Carl Reedus Jr., and I think we've covered everybody, Tony. We call, as lawyers, you know, we don't know anything about this technical videos and stuff, so we had to get help, and these are the individuals who helped us. So, please give them a round of applause before we begin. And I want to call the family of the children that are present here of Mr. Monroe Isador to sit up here while you watch the video, and I want to tell you, the video is, is a tough video to watch, but we feel that we must show you this video, 'cause you gotta see what happened to Monroe Isador, because it's real. And there are some serious questions we have to answer as a community. So, I want to call Monroe Isador's grandchildren that are here with us to the front, Ms. Paula Isador, Ms. Merlin Monroe Isador, Howard, and Ms. Roberta Foster. And I want to publicly say to them what I've said privately. Thank you all for fighting. Thank you all for fighting, not letting them get away with this for your father. Thank you, Paula. Thank you, Roberta. Thank you, Merlin. And so, we get ready to watch this video. And I want to share with you, you know, some thoughts. As you watch this video, ask yourself these questions, because this is where Attorney John Walker, Attorney Tony Walker, and I have to articulate to some jury at some point. And we want to make sure that people understand, as they watch this video, there were decisions being made. And you scratch your head and you say, "How did they conclude these decisions?" Number one, procedurally, who was in charge of the special reaction team that made the decision to kill instead of trying to disarm a 107-year-old man who had problems with his vision, problems with hearing, and author writers? Number two, what were the parameters set forth for this action that led to the death of 107-year-old Monroe Isador? Number three, at what point during the situation did the police or the negotiator confirm, as a practical matter, John, that Mr. Isador understood what verbal directions they were trying to communicate with him? Number four, what factors, such as age and level of threat, were taken into consideration in necessitating the amount of force used in the situation, and whether there could have been lesser intrusive measures to safely have Mr. Isador surrender? Number five, was there an intimate risk of violent death to anyone in the community by Monroe Isador? And you will see the video, and you decide what was the level of threat. Number six, does the very fact that the tactical intervention was used indicate that all reasonable attempts to resolve the crisis by negotiation have failed, and that violence against the people in the community by Mr. Isador was intimate to the point where they had to go in and execute this 107-year-old man? Number seven, what is the Pine Bluff Police Department's preferred model concerning the primary negotiator, or if one or more secondary or backup negotiators were needed? Usually, if the first one isn't working, then they will try another. Did they even try another negotiator before they did what you're gonna see on this video? Number eight, when was it determined by the overseeing commander that negotiations with Mr. Isador had failed, and that people in the community were in such intimate danger where they had to go execute him? Number nine, how much down law was there between Mr. Isador and the police? You'll see the video for yourself. Number 10, if Mr. Isador was in a secured perimeter, then why was the decision made to invade and kill him versus letting least intrusive measures like the tear gas take effect? Number 11, the successful resolution of the situation should have entail the safe surrender of Monroe Isador to law enforcement authorities? Were there any consideration of a safe surrender of this 107-year-old man? Number 12, was there a risk assessment of saving Mr. Isador's life versus killing him? And lastly, lastly, Tony, lastly, John, lastly, Merlin, lastly, Roberta, lastly, Paula, lastly, citizens of Pine Bluff. You watched this video. Really, how much of a threat was Monroe Isador? These are the last minutes of his life. The whole time, you're gonna see that he was on the bed, never got off the bed. I submit to you that there was video surveillance that the police, the Pine Bluff Police were able to watch this whole time, over 45 minutes. He never got off of his bed. So, how much of a threat was 107-year-old Pine Bluff citizen Monroe Isador? Let's play the video for good, Michael. It's important to note that he has a little 22. That's his...
38.
Yeah, I'm talking 38. But that's his sixth shot on five bullets.
It's also important to note that it does not indicate that he's hearing anything from outside.
Yes, sir.
So, he may not have been able to even hear, but he's certainly not moving.
Okay, now, they hear the tear gas in the door, and the tear gas comes in, and they don't let the tear gas take any effect. You see them come in immediately, and then they cut out the video, and Attorney Walker is gonna talk about that. And these are the after-effects of what happened to Mr. Walker after being shot. I'm talking Mr. Isador. Forget him. And he's still on the bed. He never moves from the bed. He was shot in the head, he was shot in the torso. You're gonna see his arm was shot off, he was shot in his head. Some of you all have grandparents. There's no reason a man who has never committed a crime in his life should have to be executed by the police. You see, um, was placed back over, you're gonna see his arm, his arm there. You see that arm, literally had a bullet shot in it that pretty much opened up, and had to hang it off. And this was his final resting place. And we see that he had lived over a century, September 8, 2013, and the Pine Bluff Chief of Police said he wouldn't do not one thing differently.
He said that.
He said that.
He was so fair.
He was saying that.
And so, you have to remember, even though he said that the officer, the shooter, he would have gave a felony test, he still said he wouldn't do not one thing differently. Even though, pointed out, they violated their own policies, their own procedures, he said he wouldn't do one thing differently.
He got the wrong job.
Even though you had people question, "Did you have the right personnel there?" That night, and it was concluded that they did not. He said he wouldn't do not one thing differently. Mr. Isador was a hundred and seventeen years old. They communicated that to the officers on the scene. But he said he wouldn't do one thing differently. Mr. Isador had children who lived in Pine Bluff that would not contact or call. The police chief said he wouldn't do one thing differently. The only question is, to you all citizens of Pine Bluff, are you gonna do something differently tonight?
Yeah!
Because Monroe Isador, a life matter, and before I pray the attorney, Lawrence walked up to talk about some of our efforts, and then have you, uh, here, I think you want to have a family member speak for us, and then Mr. Walker come up and tell you some of our efforts. I wanna appeal to your sense of humanity. I mean, your sense of humanity. We have a lot of elderly statesmen here in this room. I would just say that Monroe Isador was one of the finest elder statements for the city of Pine Bluff.
Yes, he was.
And God feared him.
God feared, and I understand from his children that he always would tell Chief John that if you wanna live as long as me, you gotta go to church and you gotta faith the Lord.
Right, that's what he said.
And so, this individual went in an appeal from us lawyers who sometimes have to fight technical, cold facts in a courtroom. We wanna appeal to your sense of humanity. And just ask you to think for a second. If this was your grandfather, if this was your father, what would you want your neighbors to do? Would you want them to stand with you when you tried to address this tragedy? Whether it was in the Plaza Hotel, or at City Hall, or protesting outside the police department to let the chief know that we don't accept that he wouldn't do not one thing differently. And so, as you think about whether to come to the next meeting or the next community gathered on behalf of Monroe Isador, think about your mother and your father. Think about your grandparents. And how you would think they deserve a better home country than the one afforded to Monroe Isador. Right now, we're gonna have his daughter, okay, uh, okay, uh, well, your granddaughter, Angela. Talking to Attorney Walker. And then if she's up to it, his daughter Marilyn's wanna pose some serious concerns for the community, and they're gonna have some questions. Angela, the best you can represent your family.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
First, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out and the efforts to reveal my grandfather's death for one. It was such a tragedy. We're still dealing with it. And I hope that we can get more participation and community activity involved in justification for my grandfather. And I don't wanna tear up right now, so that's all I'm gonna say. I'm gonna pass the mic on to my auntie.
And I'm gonna be brief. I just wanted to, uh, let you know that we are attempting to get information from the chief and the police department regarding this incident. Many of you may have read in the papers today that the top law enforcement official in this county, where at least in the city of Pine Bluff, feels that he is above the law and doesn't have to obey it. And we don't intend to let that stand. We've requested stuff which he has not provided, even though he's out of time. And there'll be more things that we're gonna ask for, such as the rest of the video, the audio communication between officers on the night in question. And we intend to, to keep the pressure on until we get everything that the public is entitled to under the law.
Certainly, that would also include the history of when they had standoff situations. Did they go execute everybody else, or was there a difference when it was other people? You all have a right to know how they treat your neighbors and how they treat others. That's vitally important. That is what Attorney John Walker has fought for all his life to make it about equal justice. We don't want nothing special. We only want equal justice for Monroe Isador and his family. Ms. Marilyn Monroe Howard will now address you, and then we will take your questions and comments. Y'all please give her a round of applause.
First of all, I wanna thank everybody. Can everybody hear me without the mic? No.
Come loud.
Now, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm Marilyn Howard. I'm the oldest daughter. Uh, I'm the daughter that the newspaper, the TV is saying that he lived with a daughter in Little Rock. I'm that daughter, but I'm not in Little Rock. I'm in Alexandria. My daddy made me a promise that when he saw, he would let me know. He lived with us for seven months. But still, I do want to say, now I do know the chief was invited, the mayor was invited. The mayor said she was an acquaintance. The mayor wanted to come and visit me to offer her condolences. I'm outta state. Don't use the taxpayers' money, okay? But I do have a few questions that I wanna answer. I want, I am still, as of this day, April the first of twenty-fourth.
It's important to note that he has a little twenty-two. That's his...
Thirty-eight.
His, yeah, I'm talking thirty-eight. Uh, but that's his last six shots on five bullets.
It's also important to note that he does not indicate that he's hearing anything from outside.
Yes, sir.
So he may not have been able to even hear. But he's certainly not moving.
Okay, now, they hear the tear gas in the door, and the tear gas comes in, and they don't let the tear gas take any effect. You see them come in immediately, and then they cut out the video, and Attorney Walker is gonna talk about that. And these are the after effects of what happened to Mr. Walker after being shot.
Eight, I'm sorry, Mr. Isador.
Forget it. And he's still on the bed. He never moves from the bed. He was shot in the head. He was shot in the torso. 'Cause you're gonna see his arm was shot off. He was shot in his head. This is grandpa. Standing with the head. Some of you all have grandparents. There's no reason a man who has never committed a crime in his life should have to be executed by the police. You see, um... Was placed back over, she gonna sit, his arm. And his arm there. You see that, that arm had literally had a bullet shot in it that pretty much opened up. It had to hang it off. And this was his final resting place. And we see that he had lived over a century, September eighth, two thousand thirteen. And the Pine Bluff Chief of Police said he wouldn't do not one thing differently.
He said that. He said that. He said that. The newspaper, he said that.
And so, you have to remember, even though he said that the officer, the shooter, he would've gave a felony test, he still said he wouldn't do not one thing differently. Even though, pointed out, they violated their own policies, their own procedures, he said he wouldn't do one thing differently.
You got the wrong job.
Even though you had people questioned, did you have the right personnel there? That night, and it was concluded that they did not. He said he wouldn't do not one thing differently. Mr. Isador was a hundred and seventeen years old. They communicated that to the officers on the scene. But he said he wouldn't do one thing differently. Mr. Isador had children who lived in Pine Bluff that would not contact or call. The police chief said he wouldn't do one thing differently. The only question is, to you all citizens of Pine Bluff, are you gonna do something differently tonight?
Yeah!
Because Monroe Isador, a life matter, and before I pray the attorney, Lawrence walked up to talk about some of our efforts, and then have you, uh, here, I think you want to have a family member speak for us, and then Mr. Walker come up and tell you some of our efforts. I wanna appeal to your sense of humanity. I mean, your sense of humanity. We have a lot of elderly statesmen here in this room. I would just say that Monroe Isador was one of the finest elder statements for the city of Pine Bluff.
Yes, he was.
And God feared him.
God feared, and I understand from his children that he always would tell Chief John that if you wanna live as long as me, you gotta go to church and you gotta faith the Lord.
Right, that's what he said.
And so, this individual went in an appeal from us lawyers who sometimes have to fight technical, cold facts in a courtroom. We wanna appeal to your sense of humanity. And just ask you to think for a second. If this was your grandfather, if this was your father, what would you want your neighbors to do? Would you want them to stand with you when you tried to address this tragedy? Whether it was in the Plaza Hotel, or at City Hall, or protesting outside the police department to let the chief know that we don't accept that he wouldn't do not one thing differently. And so, as you think about whether to come to the next meeting or the next community gathered on behalf of Monroe Isador, think about your mother and your father. Think about your grandparents. And how you would think they deserve a better home country than the one afforded to Monroe Isador. Right now, we're gonna have his daughter, okay, uh, okay, uh, well, your granddaughter, Angela. Talking to Attorney Walker. And then if she's up to it, his daughter Marilyn's wanna pose some serious concerns for the community, and they're gonna have some questions. Angela, the best you can represent your family.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
First, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out and the efforts to reveal my grandfather's death for one. It was such a tragedy. We're still dealing with it. And I hope that we can get more participation and community activity involved in justification for my grandfather. And I don't wanna tear up right now, so that's all I'm gonna say. I'm gonna pass the mic on to my auntie.
And I'm gonna be brief. I just wanted to, uh, let you know that we are attempting to get information from the chief and the police department regarding this incident. Many of you may have read in the papers today that the top law enforcement official in this county, where at least in the city of Pine Bluff, feels that he is above the law and doesn't have to obey it. And we don't intend to let that stand. We've requested stuff which he has not provided, even though he's out of time. And there'll be more things that we're gonna ask for, such as the rest of the video, the audio communication between officers on the night in question. And we intend to, to keep the pressure on until we get everything that the public is entitled to under the law.
Certainly, that would also include the history of when they had standoff situations. Did they go execute everybody else, or was there a difference when it was other people? You all have a right to know how they treat your neighbors and how they treat others. That's vitally important. That is what Attorney John Walker has fought for all his life to make it about equal justice. We don't want nothing special. We only want equal justice for Monroe Isador and his family. Ms. Marilyn Monroe Howard will now address you, and then we will take your questions and comments. Y'all please give her a round of applause.
First of all, I wanna thank everybody. Can everybody hear me without the mic? No. Now, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm Marilyn Howard. I'm the oldest daughter. Uh, I'm the daughter that the newspaper, the TV is saying that he lived with a daughter in Little Rock. I'm that daughter, but I'm not in Little Rock. I'm in Alexandria. My daddy made me a promise that when he saw, he would let me know. He lived with us for seven months. But still, I do want to say, now I do know the chief was invited, the mayor was invited. now I do know the chief was invited, the mayor was invited. The mayor says she was an acquaintance, was invited. The mayor wanted, the mayor says she was an acquaintance. The mayor wanted to come and visit me to offer her condolences. I'm out of state, don't use the taxpayers' money, okay? But I do have a few questions that I want answered. I want, I am still, as of this day, April the first of 2014, waiting for someone from the Pine Bluff Police Department to call me. I'm still waiting to say what happened. I did not get a call, I still have not got a call. I have a few questions, four, and I'm just gonna address a couple of them. Because there's a lot of questions that I need answered for myself. I want to know why did he not make contact with the family? This is the chief. I want to know what type of resources do they use? You know, daddy was known by everybody, you might as well say, in the community. The guy that was shot at, he said they would ride by and he would wave at them.
He didn't wave at them.
Okay? But he said that he waved back then. He would see him in his garden, okay? But you didn't know that was an old man, okay? I want some questions answered. Some questions. The negotiator, she talked about when my husband brought my daddy down here. She said in the spring, but it was not in the spring. She need to look at the police report. It was in the, she said the daddy refused and told, yes, they was called to Jefferson Square parking lot, where my daddy had jumped out of the vehicle with my husband. Then they called the police. She said that they had to wrestle with daddy to put him in the police car. She said, all of this is in her deposition that she gave to the prosecutor attorney. Not what I'm saying. She said that only if I would have taken him serious, he did not want to go back to Little Rock. If I would have taken him serious, okay? Police jobs are to serve and to protect. You couldn't protect my daddy? If you felt like that I, or my husband, or myself was a threat to my daddy, why didn't you call the official person that housed there in your duty of protection? The adult abused protection. No, you let us put him in a car, and then you say if I would have known that, I should have did something then. So, you know, who was in control? Reading all this crap? They don't know, they don't even know who was in control. Everybody was just running, 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 running. They were forgetting stuff. They threw stuff. They didn't have stuff, they had to run back to the station, come back to the scene. That was a sign to let you know, leave the man alone.
Amen, amen.
So, there are a lot of questions. And I really, I pray that all you all that are here now, all of you all that knew my father, please step up your game. Help us get some justice for him. It ain't about no coins, okay? It's not about that. His name. Daddy donated to everything. Daddy had donated to the police, state police and every, he had so much. Carl, you remember coming over there? You saw stuff? He had stickers everywhere. Daddy had donated so much that when he moved to, uh, with me, he had, uh, stuff coming in the mail from the India Foundation. So what I'm saying is, that was our daddy. But just think, okay? He was old enough, as far as I can see, to be one of you all's daddy, okay? Because, not giving no age. But, I, you know, I'm gonna say this, and I mean it from the heart. Please, I don't live here. I can't drive down here all the time and try to keep my job. I have a life. Daddy would want us all to go on with our life, and we're doing that. But, I need you all, as the community, to please, and I beg, please step your game up and help us get some of these questions. Because we know, I'm, I'm, I'm not gonna say we know, but I am gonna say this. The chief of police, like Attorney Quan said, he said he wouldn't do anything else. So now, if you can land your baby, and they can invade you, or whatever, you ain't holding nobody hostage, you're not doing anything to mind your own. When he lived with me, he slept like a baby all the time. It was just like a baby. Most babies sleep for 24 hours, they say. Maybe 23 to newborn, but then slept a lot. If they would have just left him alone.
Left him alone.
And Marilyn makes a good point, and I'm reminded by her and all of that. This was not a long negotiation, if you can call it that. It was less than 90 minutes before they said, "Let's go take him out." Don't you think, as she just said, Mr. Isidore would have fell asleep on the bed?
Yes, he would.
And they would have had the video camera, they would have saw when he went to sleep. And don't you think the tear gas would have put him to sleep, it would have did its intended purpose?
Yeah, but don't do nothing but go to sleep.
Yeah, and so, it's just troubling. I, uh, want, we, they have community members who want to speak here. Any more family members? Uh, Roberta, Paula? Okay. Uh, Angela is gonna play Oprah Winfrey and take the microphone around to different people. Just raise your hand, and she'll walk to you.
I keep hearing different ones say something about the negotiator. Does the negotiator have a name?
Lieutenant Fatiz. Lieutenant.
Was she or he trained as a negotiator?
That's what.
Okay, Marilyn, the questions that you have.
That is what. But looking at what she had, no.
You said you need, there's some questions that you want answered.
I want to know why didn't she do her job?
Okay, okay.
Why do you say, "I'm tired, it's not getting anywhere, I'm not getting anywhere with it"?